Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Special Meeting. We're continuing our budget hearings. It is June the 8th. Councilman Smutter, I'll put you on the spot, but would you do the prayer and the pledge?
Absolutely. If you would please bow with me. Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for the many blessings we have in this city. Please be with us as we go through the budget. Please help us make wise decisions as we go through it. Be with our police officers, keep them safe and protected. Protect our firefighters as well and all the rest of our city employees. They mean so much and they're so dear to our city. In these things, we pray. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to continue with our budget hearing. Today, we are working, the only thing that we have specifically on our agenda is our Police Department and our Drug Fund, and then we'll continue with our budget discussion, any budget discussions after that. We'll turn the mic over to Chief Dur.
You used to say, "Good evening," but it's good afternoon, so four o'clock in the afternoon. Before I get into the budget, I just wanted to talk about some of the progress and some of the efforts that we've made, the men and women in patrol and throughout the organization on some of the shooting events that have happened. You know, in all four cases of the shooting, three homicides, and the other one where the individual got shot in the face, we've made arrests on all four of those. And that comes from increased communications from patrol and investigations on suspicious activities. They've increased their partnership in that, increased the communication. They've had meetings with department managers to create channels of communication, inform the arrest room aides, so they can start, talk about the behaviors of the people running within their units. And they're working with other agencies such as probation, parole, Rutherford County, Sheriff's Office, and MTSU. They've increased patrol overtime, directed patrol cops, K-9, and SSEOs have been deployed since they've come off of their schools and gone out to patrol to help out with the efforts. Since our efforts began in March, it's resulted in over 474 individuals individually charged with crimes and over 930 criminal charges that were made. And also, as we had an individual who came forward from Oakland, retired out of Franklin, I mean, excuse me, lives in Franklin and retired out of Oakland Police Department, and presented a multi-crime housing program when they found out about the issues that we're seeing and they saw a glimpse of the past, what they faced. And so, part of our budget will address moving forward into that program. Currently, we have 250 sworn allocations where we have 207 certified officers. We have 34 recruits, nine vacancies, 47 classified full-time people, and 34 part-time classified individuals. We have eight vacancies there and four part-time vacancies that we're looking to fill. In our proposal in front of you for the positions, we have three crime scene technicians. Those are civilian positions, and crime scene investigations have become a professional field where they're specialized in crime scene investigations. So, it's not only just violent crimes that they investigate, but it's also that they assist in, but also the burglaries with residents, auto thefts, and different things where they recover latent prints, and they're able to submit them so that we can process those individuals and identify the criminals in those crimes, because we know that those lower-level crimes are tied to drugs and that we know they have the propensity to move forward into violent crimes. In addition, we have five additional police officers in front of you for approval, four detectives, one sergeant, and one crime analyst. And as I discussed, the housing initiative that we talked about, it has multi-tiers, but we're asking for those positions I just talked about, is one sergeant, one officer, and one crime scene analyst. And their responsibility will be to implement the program, and there's three parts to it where they do management training, along with a crime-free lease, a SEP-TED, which is a crime prevention program. They go out and do analysis on the property, and they conduct community awareness. It's a three-phase thing for the units to get certified, and we want to do just a pilot project within the areas that we're seeing the higher rates of crime, and then move that out to a citywide program.
So, just to make sure we can clarify the chief's request, the proposed budget in the three-ring binder book recommended four additional police positions, but in response to the apartment crime, Chief Dur and his team have developed a more comprehensive plan to go on top of what he just told you about, the increased arrests and the individuals charged. So, what we're recommending are these additional positions which are over and above those in your budget book. This is our recommended plan to help us deal with the apartment crime.
I have just two quick questions. Chief, or how many did Chief Dur originally feel like he, what was the original count he wanted?
So, we started with the four that are in the proposed budget. What I recommended in here were the four additional for the officers out on the road, but he did ask for six, and I thought the city council might want to weigh in on the additional, too.
Do we feel like that in the overall, that we can fund an additional two officers?
Yes, sir. This is a priority for us.
Does the council have any discussion on that? If we can afford it and we can make it work in the budget, my opinion, I think, you know, two more officers would be phenomenal to have.
Okay, very good. We'll put a plus-two on the, go from five officers. These are over and above what's in the budget book, so it would be seven.
All right, and then, do you mind explaining, I think it's in the budget, but explain how the structural differences in the pay for police officers on tour of duty and all those things? Do you mind explaining that?
Sure, and the chief can help me out if I get wrong. In the budget, we've already included the funding for the Police Department to go, the officers to go from 37 and a half hours worked per week to 40 hours per week. Additionally, the officers have always received the meal pay, but we're going to, what ends up happening was when we're recruiting, we have our base salary, and we would say, "Here's your base salary, but you're also eligible for mealtime pay." And oftentimes, the feedback we were getting, people were just looking at that base number. So, what the chief's done is take the mealtime pay and moved it over into their hourly rate to the officer's favor. Now, one advantage of the mealtime pay going away, but the money being replaced in base salary is that then becomes pension-eligible and retirement-eligible.
And what that will do, Mr. Mayor and council, that's going to make us more competitive in the marketplace, because oftentimes, we've had to have discussions with individuals when we're trying to recruit them and say, "Well, don't worry, this is, you're getting an additional $3,000 or $4,000 in meal pay on top of that." So, this is going to make things more transparent, but also, it's going to enable us to maybe do a compressed work week if the officers decide that's the way they want to go.
So, the net result of that is they'll be working 6.6% more hours per week, plus the across-the-board 3% pay means, you know, in big picture, there's a 9.6 increase in police officer pay. And that's over, that's before you get to anything in the pay study.
So, is that across the board?
That's for the sworn personnel.
Sworn personnel, okay.
The meal money is from lieutenant below.
Okay. And then, what does that take our starting salary for a police officer to?
I'd have to relook at the numbers. I mean, my, I was doing Excel spreadsheets, but it's somewhere around the $40,000, I mean, $40,000 a year, not $40,000 an hour, but starting pay for an officer would be somewhere around $40,000 a year, which I think is, I think, if you look at Nashville, I think they're about $41,000.
Okay.
Let me add, we're, it's actually going to be eight new, in addition to what's in the budget. There's five that are going to be backfilled from five promotions, four detectives and a sergeant, plus we had one extra that was not for backfill. So, that made six, so two more will be eight, plus the four that were in the budget, so that makes a total of 12.
Are these crime scene technicians and analysts, are they certified officers?
No, they're civilians, and it's a specialty that's out in the field, it's a profession, and you look out at Nashville, Chattanooga, Knoxville, I've had past experience with them, and they're, that's their sole thing. So, an officer goes out and takes a burglary report, and then they can call for a crime scene technician that can come out there and do the latent lifts and prints, and we can get the officer off to go out and do other work.
How many do we presently have?
We have zero crime scene technicians. We have detectives that usually fill in, and usually the nighttime, so they're doing their detective work and they're doing the crime scene work. So, we want to separate that out and really specialize in that, improve the services, but then free up the law enforcement to go do other things.
The chief's tried, you know, with several different positions, to try to civilianize work that didn't need to be performed by a certified officer, so the certified officer can get back answering calls. So, this is a program that the other cities in Tennessee have used that we feel like will help officers get on the scene, do what they need to do, but then get back on the road and call the crime scene tech to continue processing the scene that sometimes can take some time.
Several of these things are things that I know we've had some input on along the way. You know, for this last year, we've been talking about, you know, doing some things to try to improve morale, and that doesn't necessarily just, I'm not saying from a Murfreesboro perspective, but globally, police officers are in a, you know, a different spot today than they may have been five, 10 years ago. And so, look, we're relying on you to have the ideas, you know, the guys out in the crowd, and Mr. Lyons, to, it sounds like to me that these will be things that should be helpful, to, you know, retain employees, to find employees, and have a real good, you know, continue to have a really good police staff and force going forward five, 10, 15 years from now. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, and I wish I could take claim for this, but this actually came from Chief Cook and the Detective Division that came up with the idea, so they pushed it forward.
So... I mean, it's a lot of things going on, I know, that you guys have been working on. I'm sure there's a lot of credit to go around, but whatever it is, I'm for it, because I think it's, it'll be good for our folks and move on with it.
I just wanted to hit some of the initiatives that we're currently in process with. We have the new headquarters, and as we were there today, that's going to chew up more and more of our time, because we get closer to the landing that. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you can talk about construction, but it's getting more time, a lot of decisions that need to be made. The radio system, we expect to be fully implemented by the end of the budget year. We're continuing to partner with fire rescue on the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. We're also kicking off and starting up awards program under Chief Bowen. He's revitalizing that, so we want to, again, we talk about the morale and recognize the good work of our officers and our civilians, and have an awards program and actually have an annual awards ceremony, so we're looking to get that kicked off the next fiscal year. And we're also initiating a One Mine campaign that was designed in the National Association Chiefs of Police, and basically, this gets 20% of our officers certified in CIT, 100% of those individuals, civilians and law enforcement that have public contact in mental health first aid, because we're seeing a mental health crisis throughout the United States, so we want to prepare our officers and civilians to be able, when they're confronted with that, know how to react. And again, I have to give recognition to Chief Bowen and Lieutenant Gerald for really pushing this forward. As equipment, we did a load-bearing vest study over the last year. The officers had trialed various types of vests, and they were able to select one, the load-bearing vest that takes a lot of the weight off their hips, but yet, it's also a system that's a little bit cooler. And the vests are about half the weight, but more ballistically, has a higher rating. The, what that's going to cost is about $277,000, but we're also looking for a federal payback grant by having a mandatory wear policy where we can probably recoup $100,000 of that, too. And we talked, the lot, next thing I have is my, the proposed incentives for the organization. We're looking to increase the FTO pay and CTO pay up to $2,600. They're currently being paid $1,000, but our detectives are, where we got that from is a lot of organizations, you look out detectives and field-trained officers and CTOs get paid about the same. And we're having difficulty recruiting CTOs, we're having difficulty recruiting FTOs, because it's a, it requires extra work and extra liability, so we want to reward those individuals for the work they're doing, because there's nothing more critical than onboarding a new employee to the culture of the organization. We're also in scanning around what other organizations are doing. We want to initiate a language pay. We help, we think this will help us with attracting people to the organization that speak various languages, especially as we grow as a city, we're seeing multicultural coming in here. So, if somebody's out there speaking two languages, we want to be able to reward them for the extra work they're doing, and that's $1,300 annually. We've seen numbers from 3% to 5%, but we felt the fixed number was a, was a good number to come on. And we're also looking for an educational supplement for the officers that have gone out and sought their education. We're proposing a 3% for an associate and a 6% for bachelors, and you'll see the total cost for those two are roughly about $391,000 to implement that. Looking into this program, one of the things I was able to find in doing research is what they say is officers that have gone out and obtained their four-year college degree, that they have, they're more likely to be successful within their organization, lower use of the force, and lower status complaints. And they reaffirmed that study 10 years after the initial one. So, that concludes my presentation, and we're available to take any questions you may have.
Chief, I thank you for all the research and investigation you've done into trying to improve the situation for our officers, because I think ultimately, at the end of the day, that's, that's one of our primary concerns right now, is making sure that we're providing for them, not only financially, but also from a human standpoint of just making sure that they feel like, when they're trying to better themselves, that we recognize that, and of course, we're trying to do that with the educational benefit as well. I'm not sure that we might not also try to consider, as the mayor mentioned the other night, the potential of going back to some type of a step raise, and the, I think we need to do as much as we can to make Murfreesboro as an attractive position as you can possibly have. And again, I'll repeat, as I said the other night, Murfreesboro is still a very safe city, and I know that we've had three situations that basically came into our community from the outside, but it doesn't make any difference, the crime still occurred in Murfreesboro, and you guys did a phenomenal job of finding the suspects and making arrests quickly, and I think that's very comforting to our citizens to realize that, you know, the person who perpetrated the crime, or we feel like is the person who we feel is the prime suspect, has been taken into custody, because I think there's a comfort that the community feels when they know that that person has been taken off the street. Lastly, I want to commend you for the outstanding job you've done in the last year and the leadership role that you're taking within your department, and the excellent job that I think you've done in performing under less-than-ideal circumstances, but I guess that comes with the territory. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I echo that. You came in at an interesting time, so, and you brought your expertise to our city, and we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, and I can't take, I appreciate the credit, but again, I have a team behind me that I'm very appreciative of that support me, and together, we're working together to make things better, so.
I appreciate, we've had more meetings than probably we needed to have over the last four or five weeks. I know Assistant Chief Cook back in the back, Deputy Chief Bowen have been instrumental in all those, along with Chief Dur. I want to publicly tell you all, we thank you for the work that you all are doing, the late hours that you all are putting in, but also with, you know, I think as a council, I appreciate you, Mr. Lyons and Chief Dur, hearing from the council, our concerns on retention, our concerns on recruitment, and that, you know, hopefully, with some of the changes that we're making to the pay structure, that this will get us to where not only, not only are we continuing to recruit the best officers that we can, but, you know, I think it would be nice to pull good officers from other communities. And, you know, I appreciate Nashville and the things that they do, but we want to make sure that we can get the best people that we possibly can in our community. So, I think that's, we're taking a step to be able to do that, and, you know, the steps that we moved forward with Gallagher, with what the information that we received on Tuesday night, you know, we'll have this in another work session, but when, it really popped out to me, when we talk about career personnel and the discussion about how a police officer, out of a lot of jobs, will start as a police officer and finish as a police officer. So, I think that really shows that some of the things that we need to just address, and it is a different time, even than, you know, 10 years ago, being on council, it's a different time for our public safety providers, so, and I think we all recognize that. And are we still on schedule for December of '17, for December of this year, for our headquarters?
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to break ground, or excuse me, we're going to have the ribbon cutting on the bridge over Broad and the police headquarters in the same month.
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
We're planning on our Christmas party being at the new headquarters, so...
Yeah, and there'll be more to come on this air, but before some of the sensitive information gets moved into the new police headquarters, we know it'll be important that the public will want to take tours of the building. So, as we get a little closer to that day and time, Chief Dur and his team will be planning a day where the public can walk through the building, we can give some guided tours. Then, once those guided tours are open over, then we'll move in some of that sensitive information. There's certain security requirements about different parts of the building, but we do plan to show the building off when it is complete.
Last thing I want to say, Mr. Lyons, and if the council wants to chime in on this, you know, of all the things that we do in this community, the Parks and Recreation System is phenomenal, we're proud of all of our departments, but first and foremost, is providing a safe environment for our residents. So, I think, from our standpoint, whatever resources that you need, that we need to make decisions on, to make sure that we have a safe, safe and livable neighborhoods, then we want to make sure to do that. And that may make, mean that, you know, we have to make tough decisions on, we have to cut in other areas to be able to do that, but I think that is our number-one priority, is to make sure that our officers, our emergency service providers, have the tools that they need to keep our residents safe.
And we absolutely have heard you. We've been pretty aggressive on the positions that we've asked for over and above in today's presentation, plus the load-bearing vest, which I know is something that's been on the mind of the officers for a long time, so trying to be responsive.
Shane, I know you mentioned the Gallagher study a while ago, and of course, that's another meeting, but we, in conversation with Mr. Lyons yesterday, and it was, this was primarily his idea, but it may be something we need to be thinking about, is improving our curve as far as trying to get our employees at a higher rate earlier, so that we don't lose them, because the curve is, is halfway through their career, they would be about what their average pay would be, and of course, from that point on, that it improves above average, and maybe there's some way we can weight it more so that the curve is higher on the front side, and maybe the raises not be as steep on the backside, but you would get them to a higher rate sooner, and therefore, we would be more competitive in the marketplace, I think, because we would have less employees who would go, "Well, I've gotten trained now, but I'm not going to top out for another five or six years, if I, or even hit the midpoint for another five or six years, where I might can go somewhere else and hit that automatically." So, I think that might be something that we need to think about to potentially try to improve the situation we've got as well.
And we'll be looking for dates on that last week of June for, to get them back back here, trying to work around some schedules.
Let me just make a comment about the new building coming online, and again, it's just to affirm the process that when we start tying up this thing in a ribbon and everything's completed, that we don't fail to consider the aesthetics of that building, the interior. You and I had a conversation a little bit about art and what could happen in that building, that it's going to be a community venue. There's lots of things going to happen there, so I hope we're giving due consideration, not just the structure, which is the most important thing, but as we, as we finish off this cake, that we, this is an opportunity to really do something, I think, that's going to welcome our community, inform our community, you know, where art could do, do something in this public place. And so, I hope we're giving some consideration to that and not just have everything, you know, the walls painted and the doors, we want to make sure the walls are painted and the doors open and close, but that there's something about the aesthetics of the building that's considered, and it would be a good time to do that, if we've got a few months now to do that, to put something in place, and Rob, if you'd kind of begin to think about that as we're tying up this project.
Appreciate that, and that's on the back of our minds. And we just got today done, we got completed with the memorial wall, which is going to be unique and beautiful, that you don't see anywhere else. And we've, you know, they've done, they're looking at different areas and seeing different things, and then we came up with something unique for Murfreesboro, which will be nice.
Unique but not expensive.
[laughing].
So will we add this on item seven tonight? I mean, is this basically where we'll say go with this? We don't, no motions or anything?
No motions, no. Remember, we don't want to make any changes till your budget public hearing at seven, and then the next item will be, what else do you want to change? I put a, emailed you this afternoon and have a hard copy on your desk. We can go each of those one by one to see if the council wants to accept the change, and then you still have a second reading to make any further changes.
Any questions for Chief Dur? Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, if you'd like, I mean, we don't have any other changes. If you'd like, I can go through my budget follow-up memo either now or at the seven o'clock meeting. We try to capture what's been discussed thus far.
I mean, if it's okay, I think it'd be good to go ahead and go over it now.
And if you needed any encouragement, the Predators game starts at seven, and if I tell you about it now and you agree, we can move through it more quickly at seven o'clock.
I'm not going to say that wasn't in the back of my mind, but.
Try to be transparent.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. If you, you'll have a memo that says budget follow-up number one on your desk. So if I summarize, just big picture on the numbers, and then I'll go through this line by line. We had included 3.75 million from fund balance. All of these changes, including what Chief Dur just spoke to you about, would bring fund balance up to 4.3 million. But Mr. Crumley and I caught a change 30 minutes ago where we underestimated the business license revenue by 300,000. So essentially, we'd be adding a quarter million dollars to fund balance.
Yeah.
So that's the good news. All these changes, if we turn to page two.
Can we, before we get going too far, we've talked about this, what's our total fund balance right now?
I should have that committed to memory.
What it was at June 30 of last year? Is that what you mean?
Do we have what the?
Had that committed to memory.
Do we have that number that we estimate it will be?
I can tell you.
Three weeks from now.
Yeah. In our budget ad.
No, I got it. Give me two seconds. I know where.
I can pull.
June 30 of last year, 67.6.
What do we think it'll be, June 30th of this year?
Hang on. It's in the back of the book. Right now, we're saying 60,000, 60,126, 465. Of course, that's not, that's everything. That's not separating out the restricted and the assignment and.
Right. What I'm trying to come up with, so at the end of this fiscal year, we're thinking we hit general fund for 7 million?
Part of that would be the transition to arrears. We had a million and a half there. We had the park purchase.
Where we estimate the budget, the spending side is a cannibal estimation for the most part of, you know, where we are at that point in fiscal year, divided by however many months, multiplied times 12. We're just back really well on the revenue side, and we know we're not collecting all the money for various capital projects, federal funds, grants, et cetera. But we don't always get the expenditure side right. While the numbers in here are, say, $7 million, I think we're probably more like 2, 2 and a half.
Okay. Well, let me go through your, you go ahead and go through your part, and then we'll have the discussion on fund balance at the end.
Okay. So if you turn on page two, the fire department received a grant that we did not pick up in the budget, so that's actually a change to the good. So that grant will be included, first reading. There were some corrections that we found in salaries and benefits and judicial. The second item was you asked for an additional principal planner, so that is included. These are just the personnel change, the police changes we've just talked about. Building and codes, there was a request to look at another codes inspector to help with some of the neighborhood enforcement. In recreation, we changed one of the positions, it's just a $2,700 difference about an irrigation technician vacancy and added as a groundskeeper maintenance worker. Small change there. There was a reclassification for one of the marketing positions in the department, that was a $2,100 increase. Now, when we get into the operating changes in the council's budget, we had shared with you, we had a miscalculation on the memberships and dues, the correct figure should be 65,000, that's a $25,000 decrease. The $65,000 number for gift cards includes the full-time employees, of course. Ms. Gales-Harris asked about the part-time, so HR was able to provide the year-round part-time employees, those would be the school crossing guards, the people like the custodian in this building who are on the city's payroll for 12 months. While it's not in your employee handbook now, we would need to amend that. That 65,000 would get your full-time plus your year-round part-time. We added mileage in the IT department. In the planning department, we looked like we were a little bit short on the special census. We had included 50,000. We think a better number there is 75,000 to count every man, woman, and child in the city. But because you added the principal planner, we are going to be able to take out the downtown parking study and the core overlay study and have that done in-house. I know I'm going fast, I'm pausing just to make sure nobody has any questions.
How much was that taken out, Rob? Where's that?
143.
Yeah, 143.
163.
The downtown parking study was 60,000, the core relay study was 83.5.
Oh, core overlay, okay.
Mr. Lyons, when you, on the Christmas cards?
Yes.
You said it is going to include the crossing guards. What about?
It would include the crossing guards.
What about a part-time person like in our communications department? Is that person?
Yes, they work 12 months out of the year, that would include them.
Okay. Thank you.
The grant that I mentioned that didn't get picked up, you know, there's a revenue side and expenditure side. And then in building and codes, with the additional codes inspector that we would add for enforcement, we needed some money for car allowance training cellphone, plus some fixed assets for the planner and the codes inspector. So that would then bring the corrected fund balance up to just short of 4.3 million dollars. Now, out of that 4.3, then we'll make the business license tax change, so it really does bring it to approximately $4 million.
I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So we've got a, the title at the top, use of fund balance at first presentation, and then over here, we've got it first reading. Is that, that's just assuming that we're going to have first reading and that we'll agree with how it was proposed?
So what would hap?
Make a change for a second reading.
Yeah, the mechanics would be, like to open up the budget public hearing, you hear from the public, you close the public hearing, and then in one motion, if you'd like, if this was the, all you were going to do in making changes, I move to amend the ordinance with the following changes. And if you adopted this list just as it is and voted on the first reading, the fund balance will have to add in the $300,000 increase in revenue, would essentially be $4 million.
This doesn't have the other two police officers.
So if we have, if we have some conclusions that the council comes up to based on the pay study, and let's say that creates another recurring dollar amount that we have to account for, where will we be able to then make adjustments for that? So, you know, I mean, if, obviously, if we have more dollars that we end up spending because of the pay study, how will we deal with that as it relates to the budget if we've already approved it? I guess that's what I'm saying, because we won't do the pay study until afterwards.
We would do a budget amendment to amend the budget by the amount you increased pay as a result of the study.
So, I mean, if we do it on the expenditure side, it's kind of the easy part, but on the, where's the money going to come from is what I'm afraid would be the difficult part. If we had to make some adjustments on the, well, we have to reduce on this line to be able to increase on this line, you know, we still able to do that and not affect department heads or whatever that drastically? I mean, we can, well, that could potentially come into CIP discussion as well, or is that?
If you made any major changes, we've already programmed the principal and interest for what we expect the first year of the CIP to be, so we have it covered.
Yeah, that's a good question, because I have a question about a department maybe Where would the money come from if we do make the change?
You'd be fund balance, unless you take money away from something else.
Thank you.
I mentioned too, on the gift cards, the part-time people are scheduled in for half the amount as the full-time people. It's $25 versus the 50 for full-time.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, so as a rule, would we generally, I guess it obviously would come from fund balance, but would, as a rule, would it, it doesn't seem like it'd be, I guess, the smartest thing to do, to pull from fund balance on a recurring item, right? Because, I mean, obviously, then you just know you're whittling it down, but we could this year pull from fund balance, but then account for it in years following. Is that how that kind of would work out?
Unless revenue increase, it could still be a fund balance type item. It just depends on how revenue does. Right.
We could take a fund, we could take a revenue increase next year and apply it, though, to that and only really reduce the fund balance this year, right? I mean, is it, I mean, if we got the increase?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
What does our financial policy say as far as fund balance?
It says that our, let's see, I've got that in your, I want to say it says that we should keep our fund balance between 15% and 30% of the general fund operating revenues, and we're currently at the end of last year at 45%. Now, that isn't necessarily a hard and fast rule because is, when you look at the discussion, I've got it on page 10, the financial fund balance policies, I put it in my budget message, page 10 in your budget document, if you want to look at it. We're a rapidly growing community, and sometimes those hard and fast rules about how much you should have in your fund balance reserves, you probably want to have a little bit more when you're rapidly growing because there's going to be a need for a road or a park or some other sort of emergency. But, you know, the policy says 30% on the top end, and we're sitting at 45%. So that's why some of the changes that we've made, even though when you look at page 10 again, almost, you know, eight out of the last 10 years, we've not touched fund balance. We've actually grown it. Even though we budgeted at the beginning of the year, we've actually added to it because we've been pretty conservative when it comes to revenues, and we try to hold the line on expenses as well. So I think our track record has been, we've delivered it well on both ends. But yes, we're over our policy on fund balance, so.
I mean, the only reason I follow quite a bit on, you know, budget surpluses and all of those things that we talk about, and although I think having a, God bless you, I think having a large surplus or reserve, I think that's a great thing. But, you know, we've talked about in, for instance, in MED's case, that they've done a great job in building up a reserve fund, but you look at, you know, net profit of the organization, it's gone from 14 million in 2013 down to almost 5 million this year, and they've been able to do that by not raising rates, which is great. But you look at the $60 million that we have, or even the $60 million that MED looks at, and I look at that more as, should any organization be holding that much money that we collected in? So think about the, you know, underground utilities that could have been done, the older neighborhoods that we could have upgraded, you know, done upgrades. So the thing I want, my opinion, I think it's great for us to say that we've got a huge rainy day fund, but at the end of the day, that's not our money, and if we can be deploying that in other ways.
And so putting that money to work for more competitive employee pay is smart. I've got a list that I need to get to council, we're likely to ask for a fund balance assignment for what we're calling our congestion hotspot.
Yeah.
There were a couple hundred thousand dollars apiece. It was a left turn lane into the Thompson Lane Trailhead. It was some turn lanes on Haynes Drive. There's some of these little relatively small projects that we hope to manage internally to deal with some of the congestion issues. So we may want to take some of that fund balance. I think the number I saw for this year was about $2 million, and then $2 million the following year, and assign that fund balance so that we've got a pot of money that we can go in and do a quick-hit road project. Before your seven o'clock meeting, I'll pass out the list of the road projects, but we're trying to use that fund balance money to help deal with some of the things that can put that money to work, that benefit the community.
And I'd be interested to hear the council's thoughts, like, you know, if we know that we need 10 or 15 employee positions, you know, I'm not as, don't have as much heartburn about going into fund balance as long as we know we need to come up with what we feel like is the right fund balance number to keep. If we keep, over the last four years, if I remember, fund balance has gone from 41 or 42 million up to 60 million. So we need to figure out what that number is, and if we start getting below that, then that's the issue that we look at.
And one of the things Mr. Crumley's doing is doing, you know, some five-year pro-formers. You know, we, while we're handing you an annual budget, when we look at the five-year capital improvement plan or a five-year financial plan, we're trying to look not just at this year, but we need to know next year, year after that, year after that, that the path that we're on is sustainable and that we're going to continue to stay in good shape.
So want to?
The finance 101 caution is always, fund balance is one-time, and it's accumulated over the lifetime of the city. You try to put that to one-time projects if you approve spending of that.
Yeah.
And your operating budget's got to be built on that continuing stream of income coming in.
Yeah.
So that's just finance 101 to kind of put in the back of your mind as we think about this.
It's kind of a safety net, but at the same time, we've got a situation that we know is coming with the MED, probably the water department as far as major expenditures of them relocating and getting new offices. But the, but we also know we're about to experience the same exact situation with schools, fire departments, and of course, we're already talking about the increased expenditures of the police department. So we're looking at increased expenses, and it would be nice if we could pay some of that off on the front side with that fund balance and not borrow the whole amount. And I guess that's the balance that I'm looking for is how much do we pull from fund balance that keeps us within our ranges, but at the same time, you know, if we're getting on the high side of the range, then we might, you know, even have a little extra to put towards our major expenses, and so.
There are other uses of fund balance which offer the city tremendous flexibility during the course of the year in that we're able to initiate projects using cash that's already on hand.
Yeah.
Then we come to you all with the reimbursement resolution, and we go borrow the money sometime out into the future. When you talk about pulling that fund balance down, you're also talking about pulling that cash down. The short spot on our cash cycle is middle of summer, and I'm not sure where we were this past summer, but, you know, we, like any organization, our cash balances go up and down. December, we collect property taxes, we're well-stashed with cash, but over the rest of the year, we're usually playing that cash down. So there's some work that needs to be done, I think, in terms of just looking at how we flow cash in and out of the organization, one-time versus continuing expenses and some other things.
So Jim?
But I think we can make some analysis and make some recommendations to you.
Well, and I want to chime in, that's what I was waiting for an opportunity to say. I just spent $25 million in debt payments at the end of May, and the bulk of our money comes in the last couple weeks of December, six months into the year, so as far as our tax money is concerned. And we've already got several, maybe 10, 15 million dollars in refunding resolutions already.
We've probably got 10 million dollars floated on our cash balance right now, waiting for the debt to be issued.
And we're not planning on issuing debt till probably at least October. So when you think about spending that money, that shortens our operating money, that exactly what he said, our cash is exactly like this. And it sounds good, but I am more of a proponent for, like we used it for Franklin Synergy purchase, you know, that was a one-time brick and mortar, not going to be a repeat, so.
So what was the? So what was the policy? What was our typical, I mean, I know...
15 to 30%.
Of revenue.
So, I mean, you know, I think at 30%, we're clearly there, I mean...
30% of a budget.
Yeah, but we're 45 now.
Of revenue, yeah, 15 million.
Couple of million here and there.
15 million, it's between that, and you said 45%? Is that, are we at 45% now?
Yes.
So there's 15 million between the 30, to get to...
And I, I mean, at 30%, does that still allow us, I mean, that shouldn't be a policy if it doesn't allow us to do all of the things that you're saying we need to be able to do.
Well, we've been able to do the things we need to do, I just get nervous when you start spending it down. I'd have to really see the plan of what you want to do, because if you want to spend a couple million here and a couple million there and it's not coming back, there will come a point we have to say you can't do that anymore, or we'll have to borrow right away every time we have a project.
Or a random number, 30% is $46 million, and so our cushion, normally, we can just say yes when we've got a capital project that needs to get going, and then we don't have to go immediately to the bond markets, but every time we cut into that, we have to go study before we can say yes.
I can tell you my opinion on this, I mean, just from a, I think we should probably be looking to spend some of it down, but I think we should be looking to do that in a smart way, and I just, yeah, I mean, thinking about what we're doing is if we're going to spend it down, that we do it on one-time projects.
Yes.
Or if we use it, I mean, another way to think about it would be to say, all right, well, look, let's say we, well, we can use the road projects, for example, if we wanted to dedicate $5 million to those road projects, and frankly, I'd rather do the $5 million this year and not do two and two, just so we can get that rolling if they can complete them all this year, but the idea would be, you know, what would have been the debt service on that had we borrowed that money? So does the debt service pay for what our extra recurring, you know, can we use that pay down, that spend down of fund balance to then sort of, you know, the debt service that we're going to save on that?
Sure.
Will that help us with the year-to-year recurring fees that we're bringing on or adding on?
Sure, we can take a look at that. In fact, when, you know, we looked at the fund balance this year, knowing that the councils, you know, wanted to study this and make sure they understood it, you know, we stepped back and realized that we probably have a million and a quarter in payroll slippage, you know, we've talked about that last year, those are positions that just sit empty because it takes a while sometimes to fill, so. Out of that, you know, what's now $4 million, a million, a quarter of it is payroll slippage. We also identified $2.5 million of one-time capital projects that are in the annual budget, not the CIP, not the bond issue, but the things that we do that, you know, totaled up, you know, Jim looked at the fixed asset list, it was $2.5 million of those one-time things, so, you know, while we're saying it's, we're using fund balance, you're kind of assigning it for those capital needs, which is consistent, it's one-time money, you won't be spending it next year.
So make sure I heard this right, last, so June 30th of 2016, we had $67 million in fund balance?
60.7, right?
I thought you said 67 million.
We had 67 million, but the part that was not assigned for something specific was 60.7.
And three weeks from now, we expect to have how much in the not-assigned?
We didn't break it down that way in the budget, so I don't know.
We won't know until they finish up the audit.
We, I mean, are we, I got, I think I heard that we spent down $7 million of our fund balance in the last 11 and a half months.
Per the, per the estimates turned in by the departments when they turned in their budget, they're supposed to do an estimate between where they are now through June 30, so we know where, they think they'll end up. We said we would drop it down to 60 million point one, but that's total, that's not unassigned. Now, typically, people do estimate a little higher than it turns out to make sure they're covered, so I'm with Jim that more than likely, that's off, I don't know how much.
If you whip back to last year's budget, I think it indicated we were going to pull fund balance down for the end of the year by four and a half million to $5 billion, and we wound up adding the fund balance instead of, it's the way that the estimated column is mechanically done in here that...
Wait a second, so I want to make sure I'm figuring, so, every year that we get through with a budget, we, you know, I've always had a little problem with the fact of we're going to expect to spend out of fund balance, right, when we go into our budget instead of balancing it, but it sort of is always okay because by the end of the year rolls around, we actually have added to fund balance instead of dropped it. Our, is what you're telling me is that we had budgeted for this last 11 and a half months to drop it by 4 million, but it's actually dropping by 7? I'm not sure that's...
Yeah, let me, let me try to answer, answer the question. At this point in time where we end the current fiscal year is a little blurry, it's, it just is because we, we're not exactly sure. We've done some estimates, that was the number Melissa alluded to, but we did the same thing last year, and it turned out, we had kind of bad news projected, it turned out to be good news. Here's what I do know, there were a couple things that we did this year that we said we were going to do out of fund balance. We bought the property on 96, some of that was borrowed, some of that was out of fund balance, right? That was a piece of property that popped up and we said, unique opportunity, we ought to buy it, and we did. We also funded the transition to arrears. We didn't budget for that, didn't know we were going to do it, made the decision, we're going to take that out of fund balance. So those are two concrete things I know we did that we said...
I thought we didn't have an additional payroll because of that payroll on arrears.
Well, I have to accrue for those two weeks even though we won't pay for them until July.
Yeah.
So a lot of it, I think, where it gets, even though fund balance went down with our purchase of the property on Highway 96, that cash part went down, but our asset value in the property went up, because, you know, basically, we own a piece of, correct?
That would be true for that.
Yeah, so even though your, your fund balance had gone down, our, our asset would have gone...
Stayed the same.
Yeah.
Your asset goes up.
Sort of the same.
Yeah, but it washes.
Yeah, washes.
That part washes, but, but, you know, still the, yeah, okay, that helps a little.
Yeah.
But still, you know, we're at a spot where now, if we continue along the path of we're going to budget to spend $5 million out of just our operating budget every year, you know, that can't last forever, and we're going to talk about spending five or 10 million more dollars out of fund balance, we're going to be at our 30% number pretty fast.
Part is tough, is, and the one number I'm, look at is not, is what we spend on operating, because the fund balance we may be using for an asset, like where we bought Franklin Synergy.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about from a budget standpoint.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're budgeting on an operating basis that we're going to spend down $5 million, then every one of those little things that we do just taps into it, so that's why I'm kind of saying we're going, we might get to that 30% pretty fast. That's always why I've had the problem with not being closer to being balanced at the beginning of the year, I guess.
The tough thing, though, I agree to a point, but the one thing that we do have to look at is that in our operating budget where we're, you know, we've got all these items under machinery and equipment or different fixed asset purchases that we're buying, so they're not expenses, they're assets that we're buying that we're paying in our budget, so.
But they are expenses in government accounting.
Right, in government.
Water and sewer and electric, no, but for government, it's an expense.
They are expenses, but if we're buying a truck, you know, if we're buying a truck for water and sewer that's in the operating budget, we're immediately expensing that off, but we do, we're buying a truck debt-free that we don't, that technically is an asset. So I think it's, it's blurry compared to...
Another thing...
Even though you bought the real estate on State Route 96, in general fund accounting, you don't get the value of that real estate reflected into the fund balance.
Right.
Fund balance is cash, basically.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, we didn't, we, in our operating, in our operating budget, the four or $5 million that we thought that we were going to spend down out of fund balance on operating functions, we spent that down. In the years passed, we have budgeted that way, but it's never happened for the last eight years because we've always exceeded...
That's not necessarily the difference. For example, Aaron's looking in, in the budget now to see where some of the differences are. We, in revenue, we budgeted a million and a half for Gateway land sales, that we didn't have one this year. So that's revenue we budgeted, but we're not going to get before January.
Yeah, that's part of the...
That's not spending, that's, that's revenue that's not coming in.
Yeah, yeah, the, I should have clarified that, the combination of whether, either an expenditure or the revenue side.
Right.
In the past, that combination, we have budgeted for a $4 or $5 million, you know, spend down, but we've always kind of, you know, we get here to the end of the year and we go, all right, I know we budgeted that way, but good news is, we exceeded on revenues and we were short on expenses, so we actually added to fund balance. That was a big sort of reason why it's kind of okay to budget in a way where we're spending down our fund balance. This year, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, it doesn't sound like that occurred this year, and I want, I want to make sure that, you know, if we budgeted to spend down $5 million last year and we spent down 7, and now we're looking at a budget that we're getting ready to look at tonight, and we're budgeting to spend down another $4 million or so, you know, we can't just go along with this idea that, oh, well, our revenues will go higher and our expenses will go lower, so we're just going to keep adding to our fund balance forever. You know, I think this last 12 months may have said that's not necessarily the case. To the, to Jim's point and to your point, maybe that might say, maybe we better not, maybe we better be more careful about carving $10 million off the top of fund balance to go do something.
I do think it takes a lot of thought, which is, you know, I think we're all in agreement with that, it's not something you do casually if you're going to take a large amount out. What we've done this year have been smaller projects, you know, half a million or a couple million, has not been a problem, but if you start methodically taking it down for larger projects, then that's something that we really need to look at, exactly what Mr. Crumley said, talking about cash flows.
Yeah, but I doubt we would just casually start taking down big projects, we would have to look at our cash balance, look at the timing of the bond sale, we try to hold off borrowing money as long as we can, but if we got to the point where we had bigger projects that were going to have big draws, we just move the borrowing up. Instead of doing it in October, we do it in, in August and we'd be okay. So we're, we're tracking all the, there's a lot of things that are interconnected with cash, fund balance, you know, with the revenue estimates and the managing on the expenditure side, but we do look at it long-term and we do try to make sure that we're not in a position.
I guess, the way we ought to maybe think about this, and just maybe you can tell me if my math is off here, but it seems like maybe if we're considering some sort of discussion of spending down some fund balance on whatever it may be, we need to be kind of of the mindset that our fund balance is actually only about 56 or 7 million dollars right now, not 67 million, because it's, we think it's going to be more like 60, and the budget that we're about to look at is going to say we're going to, you know, we're going to spend down another $4 million, so we're kind of already at 56. So instead of it being a $15 million gap, I think our gap may be closer to 10 and shrinking without us spending any of it.
But I guess still the discussion is, is 30% adequate for us to function?
That's still a good question, I mean, is that...
If 30% is adequate for us to function, then there is a, there's a gap between what we are holding in, in fund balance and what we could apply to projects that are necessary in the community, and that's our, that we think would, you know, be appropriate for us in our community, and that, and that's, you know, that's something we just need to look at, but if 30%, if we made that decision that 30% is adequate, then, I mean, that's, that's a decision we could have some security in.
And that would take a cash flow forecast, because 30% might be good some time of the year and not good other times of the year, so that, that's part of, you'd have to chart that out.
And 30% was really looking at the best information out there in 2011 when the financial policies were put together, and that, that was, we, we looked at any number of different sources to try to find out what should we be, and that seemed to be the one that fit us. As the budget grows typically, the lower percentage for security on operating revenue shortfalls or expenses that you don't anticipate occurs, but that was the 2011, the best studying that we could do was between 15 and 30%.
And I think water and sewer does 100% of annual revenue, expenditures for theirs, and we went with revenues because that's a number that Moody's looks at, so we, we looked at that, too, a lot of cities use a certain percentage of their annual budgeted expenditures. There's different ways you can do it, and not necessarily any one best one is recommended.
And we appreciate, you know, the feedback and the conversation about this, it is something that we spend a lot of time and energy on, it, you know, we, we're, continue to be well-rated by the bond rating agencies that look at every bit of this, so two bond rating upgrades in the last four or five years, even though the community's grown and our budget's grown.
I'll tell you my opinion on this, I think, I think I'm going to formulate this, but I probably ought to think about it a little bit longer, but it sounds to me like in our CIP discussions, we may have some, some decisions to make that aren't very fun, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to be borrowing 70 million bucks a year and spending down our fund balance by 15%, or, I mean, 10%, I'm sorry. You know, that's, if we're, if we're borrowing that much money, we shouldn't be spending down our fund balance, I mean, frankly, I mean, I, it seems like to me, so, in my opinion would be, we, we need to put some thought towards that, is CIP the appropriate venue to, to talk about that relationship?
And we'll spend a little more time on the estimated year because we've historically not worried as much about the estimated year's accuracy, and it's...
We'll have that by then, is that what you're saying?
We won't be anywhere close to having a final number, but we'll be three weeks down the road and we'll, we'll be able to...
Better, yeah. Okay, all right.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on, since we're dealing with salaries and different things. Last year, our communications department, they asked us to take another look at their job class, and because they are a non-governmental department, we really can't compare them to an average communications department. Three things that our communication department does that no other department, or maybe one or two in the state of Tennessee does, and maybe other places, and one of them is programming. We do programming, in other places they do things like bulletin boards and meetings, but we also do programming. Once a month, we do shows, every month we do shows, other places don't do that, and they supply programs for YouTube and the social media, these other places are not providing that. So, and one very, very unique thing about our communications department is every one of our employees have, has a degree. So they asked us last year to look at this, they appealed their class, so based on these things alone, I'd like to see us take them up to the next class, because the class that we presently have them in...
Sorry.
That's okay. The class that we presently have them in, they are doing more of the responsibilities in the next class, so I'd like to see us take them up like they asked last year to go up to that next class, because they are doing the majority of the thing in the next class as opposed to the class we presently have. So I just, maybe if you can get Mr. Lyons to look at some of the numbers and see what difference that'll be.
I don't recall, I'd have to go back, there's, my brain can't remember.
That's okay.
Things I did last year per se, but I, what I can do is go back and look to see what review showed.
Okay, I'd like to see us look at that, and...
Can I add to that, just, and I apologize for interrupting you a second ago, but I was asking for, to look for the, the pay study document, I was, on that same token, you know, I noticed on the airports, on our airport positions, you know, they had gone outside our, the cities and they had gone to some other airports to try to get kind of like-to-like comparisons, and so what I was getting at, I was trying to get him to give me a copy, was, you know, maybe we need to take some extra lengths to try to get out there and find some like-to-like comparisons, you know, because it seems like that would be a difficult, you know, if they're doing different things.
Doing things that is not even their job class, that no other place in Tennessee hardly is doing.
Well, if they're, that's what I mean, it'd kind of be hard for us to get a survey back from Knoxville or whatever if they don't even have the same type of department, I don't know who does or who doesn't, but if they're doing different things, we might need to go outside of that, and that might actually answer the question and say, yeah, they do need to go up on a classification.
Yeah, they asked last year, they appealed it last year and asked us to take them up another notch, and I've been doing a little investigation on it, and wow, they are doing much more than their job classes are saying they're doing. And then for every one of their employees to have a degree, I think we need to look at that.
Would it be appropriate, and since we just got the pay study back and we're having that, Mr. Lyons, the workshop on the, on the pay study, but if we've got these class changes that we may be discussing?
I'll have, that, that's kind of another report that I'm going to need to get you, would be any of the positions that would receive a class upgrade as a result of a... that would receive a class upgrade as a result of a job.
Okay.
And the second thing I wanted to bring out, I've done a little investigation since the IT, they, they are budgeting $500 based on 40 something or whatever since I meant, Mal. They had a car last year, and I'm just going to recommend, if it's okay with the council, for us to consider giving them their car back because I checked, didn't they have a car last year?
They, you know, they, they've not had a.
They would use the communications department car when they needed to.
I think they may need a car and we're just looking at if we can find a car with another department or whatever, is the fact that Councilman LeLance asked last week about the liability involved in using their own cars. Well, in using their own cars, there have been some damage to equipment that has been transported. So I think it'd be cheaper for us liability-wise and dollar-wise if we could find, if we could find a vehicle in another department or whatever and let IT, I think it's very important that if they had a car, because we'd be paying more for damaged equipment than we would letting them have another car. Another thing, Mr. Lyons, in your proposed budget, you recommend a 3% raise, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does that in, are all of the employees, would they all be getting that 3%?
Yes.
Even the topped-out employees?
No. Again, the, this is, thank you for asking that question because this comes up each year with the classification and compensation plan that the council's adopted that sets a minimum and maximum pay for each position. The city manager doesn't have the authority to move someone's pay above anyone who's topped out. So that is always a decision that the council has, has taken up about. Typically, what you've done in the past is done a lump, a flat lump sum, you know, payable one time. That's not part of pension and retirement for employees that are topped out.
Okay, I would like to recommend to the council that we consider about how many, you probably maybe not know this, how many topped-out employees we have?
Usually runs about 60 or so. I'd have to get a report from, I may already have a report from Mr. Godwin, but I'll, I'll dig it back out.
Okay, I would like to recommend to the council, since whether it be 10% or 60, it's really a lot of employees. They will not be receiving the increase. I would like to recommend that either bring them up to the 3% or give them a COLA, COLA increase. If 60% of our people not getting an increase, that's a lot.
60% had 60 total individuals.
60 total, that's a lot. But anyway, even if it was one person, if they're topped out and they're working hard like everybody else, I feel like even if it's a COLA increase, we need to give all of our employees an increase.
Melissa, do you remember what we did last year for the topped-out employees?
My understanding is, once we started with the MAGS study, we stopped doing COLAs. And I don't think we've done them since we did the MAGS study.
That's right.
Last year, we raised the pay ban and gave a raise.
Yeah, it didn't come into, it probably didn't come into play for as many people last year if we moved the, the top out.
None, yeah, or just a couple, that's right.
Somebody could have something less than the 3%.
So I'd like council for us to look at that, so everybody'll be getting something.
I, I need to get some direction on, I, we can go back and look to see what the, the compensation was for the topped-out employees.
I think before, we've done it two ways, I think, since I've been on the council. We gave a COLA increase one time. And then one time, the council, we approved increasing the, expanding the budget to where they all got the 3%. And the reason why that year we did the 3% was the fact that they wanted it added. Well, we thought it would be best that we added to their base pay. Whereas if we gave the COLA increase, it would not affect the, you know, the base pay in which it affects their retirement. And that's the reason why we did it that way. So whatever the pleasure is of.
COLA does not. And I think the most we've ever done for a COLA is a 2%, is what I call.
Right, correct.
If you move the ranges, that may have been what happened. If you, if you give a 3% increase, for example, and you also move the pay structure by 3%, then the topped-out people would have received the increase that year.
That's what we did one year.
The only time that they wouldn't is if we don't move the pay structure.
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't recommending moving the pay structure this year.
We did it that way that year. So since I've been on the council, we've done it two ways.
Exactly. So there could have been years where they got it and years where they didn't, depending on how much the pay structure.
Right. So I would like for us to consider, the topped-out people, whatever way we go, consider putting them in the mix. And my last thing, Mr. Lyons, are all the salary changes that we're doing included, is it including the JAG in the budget we're considering tonight?
The JQ, no, there's, there's still, I, I've got to get a report to you before second reading on that.
So it's not including those right now, right?
There'll be a couple cleanup, just a handful less than, I'd say half dozen or less.
So, right, then therefore, before we can approve our budget tonight, we'll have to see that.
Let me ask something about the, you know, our, our salary study that we did, the report we got the other night. Are comparables placed us in the median range? Is that, is that basically what we used to evaluate where we were and we were within? She said 5%, was it?
It depends. On the whole, I believe we were 1.1% ahead of the median.
Okay, so shifting the whole pay structure 3% would still probably be within the, that range that she was.
It would, and you know, one of the things you'll hear as we begin to talk about our, our pay study, there's always good news, bad news when, when you start looking at making changes or that equal and opposite reaction. So when we move the, the pay structure, meaning the minimum pay and the maximum pay like we did last year, and it all moves up, good news, bad news is, well, the good news is your starting pay is a little bit more competitive. Your top-out pay is a little more competitive and people don't get topped out. But it also has the effect of if you were hired last year and you've been here a year, and then we hire somebody a year later, because the structure moved, now you're making the same dollar amount. And so we've heard that is, you know, been a pinch point. So that's why on a lot of these pay things, you can say there's good news and bad news when you start making some of these adjustments. This year, the decision was made to not move the pay structure so that the people who have been here a year will, when they look over their shoulder at the people who just got hired, there'll be some separation to recognize that. Bad news is, as Ms. Gales Harris pointed out, there'll be people who are topped out since, you know, the structure didn't move. So there's never easy answer on these and that's why that, because they're so interconnected, it really takes a lot of thought.
I'll just, you know, throw this out here just for what it's worth. The, since we haven't finished the pay study yet, I mean, it seems to me like making a, a decision on moving the ranges might need to wait. So I would probably want to back that out, that part of what, you know, you've had several down your list there, but that one, from my opinion, I'd probably back that one back out. Let's see what the pay study comes back. If the pay study comes back and says, hey, we're way, excuse me, if we're way behind on all the, the max end of the ranges, then yeah, we need to move, you know, that might suggest we move the range or.
I think what I heard in, in the pay study, and there's a couple of pockets where there may be somebody that's different. I think what I heard was that when we look at the median, the, the city's very competitive. What I also heard is the city council said, we want to be better than average. Those are the numbers that you're going to need to look at and you're going to need to understand what the bottom line cost is before you can.
Yeah.
And say yes or no. But I think, you know, where we're at relative to the market, the steps we've taken, the raises that we've offered, the compensation package that, you know, this council has blessed has made the city competitive to the market. What I heard was, you want us to take a look at, can we be better than average? And that's, you know, the work to come in late June.
I, I would just, and I don't disagree because I'm looking at the communications. So, you know, and several of our people that are in the communications department are, are topped out. But finding them what's comparable. But, you know, the thing, as a council, and I've gone through three different pay studies now, I think, is what I've. We, we need to make sure that we're not handcuffing council members that come after us. Because if we make a decision that we're going to move one group and not move another group without really having that pay study, which I think we do now, then we end up with a pay study that we've all said, okay, well, this is the direction we're going to go. And we end up with those same compression issues because the firefighter I talked to night before last that has gone through three different pay plans. And it's that compression issue that you just, if you don't stick with something, you're going to end up with that, that compression issue that I'm not sure how you fix. But I think to what you're saying is we look at where those areas that we see that may have a need, comparables. And then that's how you can do that across the board.
And the positions in communications, I know when I saw the first draft, that was a position they were having a hard time matching to that they were going to have to go back and take a look, so.
Yeah.
You know, that may be one, one needs some special attention.
And the problem with the communications department, like they pointed out to us last year, we have them in the wrong class because the responsibilities that we have, that is showing in the class that we have them, they are doing much, much more than that. And they want us just to put them in the right class. If we put them in the right class, then that'll take care of their salaries. They're in the wrong class. Based on what we have them and looking at what those people do in the class we have them, they don't do that. They do much more.
We'll take a look at that, we'll go to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just happen to look it up, that's what I, and, and they do have an NA by the, the market side. So, you know, that.
They were, and look, not every city's got, you know.
Right.
A TV department, nor one that, you know, is, is doing some of the things that we are.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, that they are so unique. That's why we can't really compare them to a lot of things because they're just so unique. They do so much more than, they are very close to NBC, CBS and ABC.
Can we start selling, can we start selling advertising?
No, sir, you don't want to start that.
All right.
Okay.
When we have changes like that, how, how do we go about, where, where does that filter back in? I mean.
That would be a memo from me to you before second reading is what we're going to hurry up and try to do.
How do you know what the council would say? All right, just for example, if she just listed all four things, how do we know which four things at least four of us want to add?
Because when we got through all the conversation, I was going to try to get a sense and.
Okay. All right, you know, look, I think the topped-out thing is important. I mean, I think having a range is important. And so I'm, you know, I hate to say this, I got a lot of friends who I've grown up with who are topped-out employees, you know, of, of the city of Murfreesboro, but I think it's probably an important thing. If, if we decide we should move the range, the, the whole range, I think that takes care of that. But I, I think we just did that last year and it's not something that probably is, is the right thing to do every year, is my opinion, but.
We're just kind of getting, so, you know, myself and HR, it sounds like they're going to be involved in, in some of this. The, looking at a top-out compensation, is there a consensus from the council that we take a look at what we've done in the past? How many employees and what the cost would be?
I think it's important for them to be topped out. I'm, I'm not saying it's important.
And I agree. I think that's why we do a pay study is to determine what their pay range ought to be. And topped out means topped out. And, and if you deviate from that, then you're questioning the results of your study. And if we're going to pay people to give us a study, we either need to trust the results we get or we need to say, we're going to just throw it out the window and manipulate, pay everybody what we want to pay them.
Well, and we're right in the middle of doing another one, too, you know.
The bad thing about that is that, that's kind of happened in the past a few times and that just creates chaos for every employee. So I mean, and, and I, I don't even say that I necessarily agree with the person who sees somebody coming in at their pay rate. Just because the scale moved, they got the increase, I don't care what the other person makes. We're paying you what you're worth. And if, if, if your only concern is, I want to make more than the person beside me, I think your focus is probably off. I mean, I think that we've done a study, the study says this is what we should pay you. And if that's the case, you know, if there's a question, you know, you could certainly ask for a review and have your position reviewed. But as far as just going across, especially with entire departments and sending entire departments out of category or classification, I just think that's very risky to start doing that because what if you come back again? And let's say you've done three studies and all three studies come back and say their pay right, pay rate was right where it was supposed to be. Now, until you've done comparative analysis to people who are doing the same job in the same position, I don't know how you determine they're either underpaid or overpaid, so.
That could go back to the validity of the study and not, I mean, you know, who's to say that's the gospel? I mean, the study could be wrong.
Yes, so to clarify my position on it, I think it, if, the only way that we should give raises to the topped-out folks is if we determine that we're going to move the range, okay? And I, I'm, and, and so that would be my opinion on that. My opinion on the communications department is that we do take a further look. Because there's an NA here, I think it's the right thing to do that we do make sure we do have, because all this stuff that we're talking about as far as we have this market study, well, we don't even really have a market study for them because it is not available. So I think we need to put a little bit more effort into that. If, if we find out, if we find out that the market requires a, a change, then I think we should make a change.
Yeah, immediately, in this pay period, because, I mean, in this budget, because they asked that same question last year. We, they appealed it last year and we are back this year with the same appeal and I think we need to take action on it.
Yeah, let's make sure we're, we're, I'll speak in the same language because I'll make sure I'm clearly understanding the council. You know, the, the job analysis questionnaire, the JQ is, is what it's referred to. That's where you go through the 14-point factor analysis to see if there's been fundamental changes over the last time one was completed. I honestly don't remember the results of, of last year in the details. That's the document I was going to go back and, and take a look at. As I recall, I don't think the communications director asked for a JQ review of the, the positions. But if we're off, you know, it's something that we can, you know, we can consider if that's the council's.
So can, can I ask the council this? You know, if we know that we've got the pay study where we've got the top, so the bar, they set the bar at, at that, what that level is, is it, is it possible that, you know, these things that we're talking about, you know, really before we, we talk about, okay, let's look at the communications department, we really need to go back and get the data? Because they, they should have a lot of this to where, you know, if we're talking about a JQ that's going to be filled out, that we can really look back at what our current market study that we just got back.
And there's really two different things that we're, we're, we're talking about here. And that's why I want to make, be, be kind of surgical about how we talk about them so that, you know, there's not confusion or staff's unclear in, in the direction. The JQ is a process we go to evaluate, should it be a grade 119, a grade 120, a grade 121? When you're in those grades, they obviously all have minimum and maximums. That is a different animal than being topped out.
Yeah, but so what I'm saying is if we know, like Madeline, we've got, if we know we've got topped-out employees, then let's compare that to what we're showing on what our market that we just got back. And so, you know, because we, we were showing on our police, there were certain structural positions that it was actually showing on the graph, I've got it down here. But it was showing, there was a couple of positions where I think fire captain was one on the fire, that the fire captain was actually lower than what the, the peer cities were. So that would be one that we easily could look at and say, if you've got a, a fire captain that's topped out, well, based upon our market study, we're, we're lower than what other fire captains are, so.
And like we mentioned, the, the video position is tough to match. Sometimes the fire captain is really tricky. Many departments have a lieutenant, we have a captain, there's different rank structures. Sometimes that can be difficult. I think they worked hard to try to smooth some of that out, so we knew we were comparing captain to.
Well, my question is, instead of us trying to go through individual positions and say that we're going to change individual positions, can we not have that discussion at that end of, end of June? And if we find that there are issues that we need to address, we can retroactively look at what the cost is and, and take that back to the budget.
That's a good call.
Okay, if we're, so any of those, those pay issues, we'll just take that up as part of the Gallagher study? Is, is that what I'm hearing from the council?
That makes sense to me.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's good. I mean, I mean, the whole idea, you know, the reason that we decided to do this a year early, I think in real simple terms is, hey, we just want to make sure our folks are getting paid like they are being paid. That's it. It doesn't matter if you. It doesn't matter if you call it JQ or ARF or MAG or Gallagher. Let's just figure out what we need to do to make sure that happens. That's it.
Okay.
Were any of the communications benchmark jobs that the Gallagher study used?
It was, it wasn't one of the benchmark positions.
It was, I didn't, I didn't.
I believe it is.
Okay. I was just checking that and I didn't have that.
Mr. Godwin's nod in his head, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Hey, the last thing, and I think other council members may have some things, but Mr. Lyons, I, I would like, I met back end of April and did a walking tour between Murfreesboro Housing Authority and Oakland's. And Murfreesboro Housing, although the fence, it's debatable on whether the fence between Oakland and Murfreesboro Housing is on MHA property or if it's on Oakland's property, but I don't think that there's, there's any denying that there's some structural and deterioration problems. Can we get MHA to look at, in conjunction with the city, what we need to do to, to fix that? We're having issues on a basketball court that was behind Oakland's and there's discrepancy on whether that is MHA property or that's Oakland's property, but they talked about, you know, a community garden, all these different things behind Oakland's. But if we could come up with some kind of resolution on that, that would be, be great.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council members?
Do you need input on outside agencies yet?
Yeah, I think we're at the point in the budget where we're going to look at the council and say, is there anything else that you would like to add or subtract?
I have one request that I want to, that we alter, that Reed Succeed and go ahead and fully fund their, the request was $10,000 and we had approved 7,500. I want to, I'd like to fully, fully fund their request.
Are the predators an outside agency?
Any other questions?
So, the game plan then going into, to seven o'clock is budget public hearing, ask for any changes that the council would like to make and then that motion would be to amend first reading to include those changes. You'd approve first reading knowing that, you know, we still have a couple of loose ends. We would schedule second reading for next week, but we still have January, June 22nd and June 29th as backup weeks so the council need additional time, so we have time and space.
Mr. Kendall, when we're talking about discussion of changes, is it, how do we need, because we've had the discussion at this meeting and not the, the meeting at seven, can we just reference Mr. Lyons' memo?
We can, and this meeting is obviously open to public, it's televised, it's recorded, so anybody who'd be interested in more information could obviously get it.
You can do that in one motion is I guess the upgrade with the.
All right, we have public comment at 6:30 and can we start public comment early or does it have to be at the advertised 6:30 meeting?
It should be the 6:30 meeting.
Okay. We have a lot of people who want to speak tonight, so.
Mayor might just add one more thing on budget because I want to embarrass Erin. She works really hard on the budget and works a lot of hours, so we were scrambling, we always have a theme on our budget cover, so this year our theme obviously was police since we've, you know, had a lot of efforts focused on the police department. What you don't realize is that some of the pictures that we had that were taken, included children, you can't put a child's picture on a public document without the parent's approval. So, that would be Ms. Tucker's daughter in the pink shirt on the top left corner and she was here Thursday before budget and I got Lily to sign an autograph.
Nice.
You look at the budget, she works hard on it knowing that her daughter's on the cover. You may not know that, but.
Nice.
That's awesome.
While we're giving credit, I'll name the others. The little boy in the orange shirt is the son of LeAnn Bididoo?
Biddix.
Biddix in our department. I can't pronounce her new name. And the little girl in pink next to Lily is Regina Dorsey's granddaughter, Debbie. And then the little boy in the blue shirt is Melanie Carter's grandson Knox.
All right.
They were all children we could grab out of daycare.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
All right. Can we, can we get like a buzzer that we can, I, I, I can't remember who sent me.
You manned the buzzer.
There was, it was a, it was a picture of a mayor that had, up underneath them, it had the time, the, like the three-minute time limit, so it was like a countdown, you know?
Well, it's actually kind of good because at least the person can see that. That actually sounds good. They can see that it's, you know, I need to go to get to the point if they don't.
What's funny is.
The campaign forums where they, they hold you up 30 seconds, 15 seconds, bang, you're done.
Every time I look over there.
I was in a, I was in a Parks and Recreation meeting and the two things that Gary, or Dennis Rehner and Lanny Godwin had, both had is they would go on for quite some time. So, I forget, Den, or Dee Jernigan had two cards and so just right in the middle of Dennis presenting something, he, he put a red card up, said something like, your time is up. And so, it was, it was pretty funny. All right, thanks everyone for your hard work on the budget and we will start public comments in 54 minutes.